You ready for? Y'all ready?
We don't live down.
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to another episode. You already know what it is. How you know I know you know what it is? Clicked on the link to tell you what it is. Or you just fucked around and found us by accident, but if you did, don't go no way because we finna get lit. Smoking permitted podcast. This is a special session. You know the special session is, they don't bother telling what the special session is.
Special session is when we find somebody that is a pillar in the community, the region, the state, somebody that came across. Our goddamn timeline, our interest, our eyes, and we wanna know a little bit more about them. We wanna share that with you. So, like I said, stay right there, goddamn. Cause now we here.
I couldn't say it no better myself.
Hey, man, I'm sitting next to the best, which you expect.
Y'all tell them who y'all is, where y'all from, what y'all doing?
What do, man? It's your boy Dre, AKA Dre Make Plays, man. Um, automobile Alabama, song for song music, man.
Missouri, what it do? Ron G, AKA Mr. Exclusive, uh, Studio House, Mobile, Alabama, in the building, Studio House.
It ain't a whole lot of places that make me nervous in this country. Mobile, Alabama, there's a few streets I've been on by accident. Where I had to pull my purse and put it on the seat, like, I know I shouldn't be here and I can't stop and ask for directions right here.
Think that's an accurate description of, of where y'all from?
Yeah, we get that off.
It was part of it. It was very, it, it was, it was very prestigious. It was some nice neighborhoods.
I did that when I was walking in DC.
Mob town, man, that's it. That's all I can say.
Mobile, Alabama. Well, welcome to us, man. Welcome to what we do at the Smoking Permitted Podcast. Tell them what they find y'all. They looking for y'all. Y'all socials.
Man, song for song music. That's the number four in the middle. You feelin'? Song for song music. And Dre Make Plays on Instagram and Facebook. So, song for song music, Instagram and Facebook, Dre Make Plays. It is a song for song Twitter too, though. So, it's just active, yeah, but that's it.
And we gonna have the links in the bio, I mean, in the description and everything.
Shout out to Nettie B for putting us on y'all.
Shout out the whole movement. Sound on the hill. Shout out CC.
For sure, for sure. Studio House Recording, Studio House Rec, R E C. Uh, Ron G Pro, pretty much on all platforms, Twitter, uh, Facebook. Uh, uh, we got WWW dot Studio House R E C dot com. They get you linked up with everybody that's on the team, Link with Trev, and also.
Congratulations on the baby, Lando.
First time at the rodeo. Man, we, we, we talked to a lot of people that, that, uh, tell us they gonna share their time with us and then we never see them again, so.
Be up this high and not come touch the sky, man.
Appreciate it. Got to end, end, you know, smoking permitted. Breathe, Kato, breathe. Put your hands up. How y'all meet?
Damn, he went. We grew up in church together.
Oh, that's a different bond.
I told you I used to go to church like four times a week.
Who do you know still from church?
I had a church friend until he snitched on me. I'm saying, we was real close friends, but he did some other shit.
My church friend invited me to his wedding.
The wrong church friend. I had two, one of them died.
Aw, see why you got it.
I'm just saying, I had church friends. It just didn't work out like they relationship worked out.
Oh, man, that's what's up. So, obviously, being in that environment, y'all, y'all had to deal with music. You had to learn some song you didn't wanna sing. You had, you had a solo you didn't wanna do?
Well, see, I, I wasn't into music. He, him and his brother ran the music, like, I'm saying, like. Teenagers, they, you know what I'm saying? All the music, it was him and their brother, bro.
What you was doing in the church?
My uncle was the pastor, you know what I'm saying? My granddaddy was a pastor. Cousins. That's why I talk like I do. That's what they say. I just, I ain't against it, you know what I'm saying? I ain't saying that, but, you know, I, I'm just me.
That's all you could be.
I get it, you know what I'm saying? Growing up like that, so, I just say I got the best of both worlds, man.
So, for you, what was your introduction to the music?
Being bad. I used to freestyle all the time. You know what I'm saying? But I, but I, I wasn't trying to be an artist, you feel me? I was trying to be an athlete. Uh, I could play any sport, but my main sport was football and basketball. Basketball more so because I liked it. Football, I was better at. Baseball, I probably would have been real good at. Anyway, you know, um, just freestyling all the time, man. And somebody I end up getting connected with introduced me to the music aspect of it, but I ain't wanting to do no music, bro.
Yeah. So, who, so, the person that introduced you to it had to be influential enough to make you take the time to, to actually. Try more than just freestyling, right?
Listening to rap, my cousin Danny, uh, knowing rap, well, knowing rap, my cousin Danny, listening to rap, my older brother. But, a, a cousin I didn't know was a cousin, got me into the business of it. That made me wanna learn the business to educate people. Cause my family fucked me over my first time in the music. I was fresh to it. I was raw, so I was really a victim because I didn't know. It was my uncle who was like, this your distant cousin? He a big industry person? You know what I'm saying? And that facade looked good enough to buy me into. Knowing, you know, so, yeah.
Taking the chances.
That's how it was for me.
I wanna know how you, at, at sixteen, turned out being in charge.
Well, I've been, I've been in music forever. Uh, I started playing piano like nine.
What, what was that? I'm sorry. What, what was the household like that you and your brother were in? What was, what? Were both your parents there? What kind of music was playing? What, what was that environment like?
It, 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 it was pretty colorful and definitely like a Renaissance type thing. My dad was an honored personality at two or three radio stations at the same time. He was also a disc jockey, you know, he'd set up and go play gigs, weddings, you know. Like that. This mobile, yeah, yeah. My mom was a, uh, interior decorator. And, uh, ended up, they were also a gift maker, so they ended up owning, uh, uh, my dad worked at radio. She also worked the day job at Dumas Wesley, and then they eventually opened up an art gallery.
Raised in the arts.
Yeah, yeah. So, it was, it was, the music wise, my dad switched genres with every radio station that he worked at, so. It was country, blues, rap, jazz, you know, that bluegrass, everything. Yeah, yeah. So, it was, uh, definitely a big mixture of what was going on. Like I said, he was also in the framing art. And, uh, my older sister, she's an artist. She paints. My other sister, she was in the choir, so.
So, it was four y'all all together?
It was, yes, four of us all together. Actually, it's five of us, actually, but, uh, my big oldest brother, he didn't live with her. But it was four of us that was in the household and my mom and my dad, so, I said, they, they hardworking people.
What's the, uh, age difference in you and your brother?
Uh, well, actually, my brother passed, uh, my brother passed, uh, two, two, two months ago. Fourteen months apart. Oh, yeah, yeah. We fourteen months apart. Uh, my sister, uh, three years and five years. So, we weren't separated by two, two months.
It's a twin, Siamese twin? It's a term, it's a twin term for siblings that are born within a certain amount of time each other. It's technically, I think, eleven months, but y'all were close though.
My mom definitely raises like twins. We dressed alike and all types until we got to being like teenagers and developing our own. Yeah, so, it was definitely a lot easier for her to go, you know, to the store, see two medium shirts on. So, yeah, 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 man, definitely, uh, that was definitely a tough loss. But at the same time, you know, I know, bruh, they want us to keep pushing and doing stuff like this, so. Kind of, we on tour now, for real, for real.
Y'all, y'all had the same taste in music? You liked the same things? Y'all go back and forth?
Uh, I mean, for just music wise, yeah, he definitely, we influenced by a whole lot of the same taste. Uh, we love a lot of the stuff, same things that we love. Uh, we were really into, uh, 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 I guess you could say. Haberdashery type clothes, suits and all types of. So, like I said, we all grew up in the church together, so, you know.
Hey, look, culture shop for real.
Like, like, my dad was associate minister of his uncle's church. My uncle had his own church as well.
Say the word again.
Uh, haberdashery. Alright, so technically, my uncle is also a haberdasher, and these are guys, like tailors. They're, they, you know, they have suit shops, like, and they have more than suit. They got jeans. So, that was, my, my brother was huge into.
It's like a doula to a midwife.
He, he was super huge to dressing up, so, you know what I'm saying? My uncle, he had a suit shop. He was a haberdasher. We able to get, you know what I'm saying, cool custom stuff, and that was just one of his things.
I like that word.
So, like, I, I got way more like suits than I do regular street clothes.
Haberdastery as well?
Man, I, I got. We grew up where I was just more shirt and tie with some slacks. But when I got older, I got more into the suits and, you know. Yeah, you know what I'm saying? Understanding like, just really, you know, that is not. You know, just because my pants are a little short, they not. Yeah, you know what I'm saying? Like, to, to how to wear the accessories, but, you know, I, I didn't grow up in it like that, you know what I'm saying? More grew to understanding myself.
Are y'all pocket people? What is the pocket? Pocket square.
I'm more probably going, already have one where it's already in there, but I do like learning how to tie ties though.
Neckties or both ties?
Either, just because like, I used to tie like the different knots. I used to work at belts, so I used to tie the fancy knots, like, where I got the small tongue on front of the big tongue and.
Last time I tried, it didn't work out. I don't know if I remember that.
What's on that iPad over there?
Oh, shit, we got some questions over here. Um, we got a few survey questions. We asked all the guests that come through. Um, we gonna hit y'all with some of them. Some of them kinda strange, some of them not. We gonna, what, which one we gonna go first? Um, alright, take this out. We ain't never had two presidents at the same time, but today we do.
Today we do.
Y'all president of the United States of America for twenty-four hours. Whatever you do, whatever you say is, like, is president. You do the shit, it stick there. They can't come tomorrow and undo the shit. You do whatever you wanna do, goddamn. You can fly Air Force One till that bitch run out of gas. Anything you wanna do. What y'all gonna do to presidents?
I'm gonna make it where everybody be equal for real, for real. You know what I'm saying? Like, everybody got real deal, equal plan for you.
Everybody got same amount of money?
No, no. The opportunities to be, who, you know what I'm saying, who we freely wanna be. I can drive a Benz and be my color because I know how to make money like you do, and I know how to invest it and flip it and, you know what I'm saying? I ain't gonna make life easy for people like that, but my, my, you know, I'm gonna be able to get my chair in forty acres for real. And, and it not have been me having to beg for, it's just because, you know what I'm saying? I can put my kids up. And they can choose, you know, what I'm saying? Like I said, you still gotta work, gotta hustle, like, I ain't just about to, but as far as. If I'm doing business or creating a way of life and being able to hand my kids and teach them the game, the. Stocks and the bonds and, you know what I'm saying? Like, I, I just wanted to be fair. That's it.
That's your whole, that's your whole day for president?
Just making equal plan for you. That's, that's what I'm always about.
Alright, that's gonna take some work, but we gonna get it done.
If, if I could be my color and live like other people live. Too many of us die because we don't understand. We just dying just because. Know what I'm saying? We, we don't just wanna kill each other. So, yeah, make it fair for my people to live fairly too.
Alright, wha- what you doing, what you doing for your day as president?
First, uh, for me, I'd start off with, I guess you would say flipping the tax slope. From, you know, riches to the poorest.
So, everybody not, the rich people pay more taxes.
Yeah, of course, with that. You know what I'm saying? I mean, just, just, I mean, I wouldn't, but in a way that it's like. Okay, I'm not punishing you for actually. But at the same time, with the extent of the assets that you do have. If y'all doing it to the poor, y'all should be doing it also to the rich. You know, those stipulations. And some of the tax loophole that have been put in place for rich people. I'll take them out.
Them loopholes are doing some shit.
Uh, uh, the, which, you know what I'm saying? I get it because I know when I get rich, I wanna do that, but at the same time, it's like.
It do be them folks that got all that money and don't pay any taxes.
I feel like everybody should pay the exact same. If motherfucker gonna have to pay ten percent of what you make, then everybody pay the same ten percent of what the fuck they make for real. But yeah, you right, them rich motherfuckers fuck around, don't pay no taxes. Nah, bitch, I'm a church.
Them companies, what them companies be?
I would, uh, 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 make, uh, definitely executive order to make Bitcoin illegal tender. And not tax anybody on any crypto gains before that executive.
That work right there. I like that right there.
Definitely would do that.
I like that. No tax on Bitcoin.
All, all digital currency?
I mean, just, just up until the point I sign the order. Now, after that, once we get everything in order. Because, I mean, you got to put some type of. Infrastructure. Yeah, you gotta put some type of infrastructure in order for, you know what I'm saying, big money to get involved. Like institutional money ain't gonna get involved without governmental control, rules and boundaries and stuff like that. Everybody's Bitcoin ETFs automatically that day as well, because, I mean, that's just, that, that's money we need. I'm building a whole section of the government.
If y'all were offered reparations, would you take it in Bitcoin or in physical?
He didn't talk me too much about the understanding of it. You get what I'm saying? Like.
I would definitely take it in Bitcoin.
Alright, we gonna have him come back and teach y'all about Bitcoin.
Look, this the guru, man. Like, I ain't too proud to tell people. This is my mentor, you know what I'm saying? Like, whether we just in the same age bracket or nothing, like, bruh, Jim, you see what I'm saying? What he doing, what he put into, what he believe in, you know what I'm saying? Like, he going to bat for everybody's understanding, you know what I'm saying? This man resume is something he'll never speak on himself, you know what I'm saying? Like, he just show up with his leadership and what he exemplified, you know what I'm saying?
We definitely want you to come back and tell us about Bitcoin.
So, look, that's why church got us here, you know what I'm saying? He didn't been the same person since, did he?
And it's simply because of the fact that, you know, I ain't been, man, that executive order definitely inject. Money, credit, investments at the middle school level.
Yeah, teach the shit, yeah.
You know what I'm saying? Check writing, balancing book sheets.
I remember they showed us how to write a check, like, one, one day.
One day, yeah.
Like, for one day and then that was.
Matter of fact, it was in a little book that had little stuff to do as a, you know.
Curriculum early. Saving money and stuff like that, digital currency, all that. I need to definitely be in curriculums early, credit. You know what I'm saying? Building it, CPA, CAE's.
And look, and why not when kids can be a, a, a internet sensation at five years old? An internet sensation. That, that little boy was making twenty-five million dollars a year reviewing toys.
Opening the doors.
So, why, why wouldn't he need to know that? You get what I'm saying?
Gee, y'all had a heavy presidency.
Those motherfuckers like, yeah, I'm gonna make weed legal.
Straight illegal weed still, damn. Gotta reevaluate my life.
It, it's fun going to travel where weed legal at, so I ain't tripping about that. Why, why chase some shit they already working on?
Speaking of travel, we got a time machine. You go back in time, you go forward in time, you take three people with you. Where you going in time?
Where I'm going. Where you going? For taking, uh, uh, oh, yeah, for my, my, so I definitely go backwards.
Bad. Where, where you going?
Ninety-seven. Ninety-seven, actually, and taking people with me, I mean. Yeah, I mean, the people that go back with me, I mean, they kinda be there anyway. You know what I'm saying? So, yeah, ninety-seven and, you know, the people that I wanna go there.
What's going on? What's nineteen ninety-seven?
Bitcoin was created in that.
Put everything on Bitcoin.
I mean, to be able to, you know what I'm saying, convince more people, I mean, cause we.
Fuck all y'all. I get there when it started. I'd own the fucking state. Two, three states by now, goddamn. I was thinking like Reasonable Doubt came out in ninety-six. I don't, I was trying to think, what was going on? Then I had to go back, go back. I didn't know about the Bitcoin.
I definitely know in ninety-seven.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Eleven dollars, ten thousand Bitcoin.
Who you think, who you think would have been the hardest to convince about Bitcoin in ninety-seven? Uh, you would've, you would've went to somebody first and been like, who you think would have been the most difficult?
My granddad.
Oh, yeah, I could see that. How old, how old was he? You had, you had like a real granddad, like an old granddad.
Everything just like being the same person, go to the same McDonald's, like the same cup of coffee.
Watch that little bitch.
I can't even touch it?
You can't even see it.
Probably two thousand six. Two thousand six. That's, that's really when I was pushing so hard to be something that I wasn't. So, if I'm taking what I know now, I'm, I'm strictly going into entertainment when I leave high school. Cause if people really know me and my personality, like. You know, I just don't do it now because I, I want a more professional edge, just because I wanna educate. That's all I'm about for real. I don't wanna be in the spotlight. You know, I'm a host now, but, you know what I'm saying? But, you know what I'm saying? That's another reason I do that. Rest in peace, my dog Slade, but, you know, I would have gotten the entertainment early. Cause I, I'm a fool, you know what I'm saying? You know, and I wanna be in acting, I would, so I wouldn't have been so heavy on sports. I would have went strictly into entertainment, learning the business of it then, like, hey, bro, go learn the business. Cause this thing called the internet that you already own, like, start recording your videos, bro. And putting them on your Facebook that you already got, your MySpace, like, you know, Twitter, like. That stuff was out and it wasn't the thing in O six, you know what I'm saying? Like, I was, I wasn't even posting my clips like that. You were posting them on YouTube. I would have tell myself, hey, bro, go be more active on that YouTube. You know what I'm saying? Go, like, go do that and, like, he gonna be my boy, so if he in ninety-seven with the Bitcoin. I'm the, I'm the entertainer. When, when, when they finally start hitting together, it's like, oh, Dre, hey Dre, you famous.
I guess, uh, people that are in school, athletes, whatever they doing, younger people, kids, teenagers. They have the option of doing that and playing the sport. You think you would have done both if you had the option, or you think you still would have told yourself?
In two thousand six, I would have been going to jail if that stuff was on camera. You know what I'm saying? And I ain't saying I was just reckless like that. I just like. It still wasn't cool to smoke weed in O six. Like, my whole class used to talk about me because I was one of the dudes that smoked weed, that was an athlete. You know what I'm saying? I'm the only one on the basketball team smoking weed. I'm the oldest dude, you know what I'm saying? I done snuck weed on trips and stuff, like. I'm getting in trouble three year later. I'm out of school, coke. Boy, you took some weed, it, it, you ain't catch me, bro. We were good. Ain't nobody getting in trouble, you know what I'm saying? I knew what I was doing, you know what I'm saying? But like, it just, like I said, bro, you know, some of this stuff, people reckless. My mindset wasn't to be reckless then. You know what I'm saying? But, like I said, it wasn't just people recording me every day. But as far as just being funny naturally and just, it ain't an act for me, like, say, it ain't an act for me to be funny, like. It just wasn't people recording me, but it's so, like, yeah, I would have. My younger years of being funny, I would, I would have, yeah. Juisky then would have had to really come with it.
Competition, goddamn.
Yeah, for sure.
So, right now, um. Y'all kinda have a joint venture going on, right? Tell, tell us how y'all started the showcase.
Song for song really just started, um, as a way for me to kinda bridge gaps. And do what I did as a manager and consultant in a, in an area that didn't know what that was, you know what I'm saying? So, people weren't booking me for consultations, so it was like, I, I know all the heavy hitters in the city. Like, I know Ron G, you know, when people can't get a session with Ron G. I could get you a session with Ron G if they don't know Ron G already, you know what I'm saying? Other people I'm connected to, so it was like, alright, let me do something that the artists like to do. The artists in Mobile love to perform. Like, it was so many open mics before I started my event, like, every, I like. You know, just open my, anywhere they could go perform. But the one thing, they just wasn't getting none out of it in my perspective as a growth. Either they weren't taking it or it wasn't being given properly to where they could understand, right? So, I created Song for Song as a way for me to just kinda get people to know who I was. Get people to know what I did and then bridge the gaps so our city could be a community. It was never about Dre being somebody. It's about, hey, y'all, like, we can do it, you know what I'm saying, collectively. If you meet this person you never met and that piece, person meet you, you don't know who can record your sound. You mad at that engineer, but he go find more, and there go twenty videographers, and there go a radio and a podcast. There go news and there go media. And there go this and that, and we all in one room. Now, what's your excuse? You see what I'm saying? And, you know, it, it, it picked up, you know what I'm saying? And, you know, me and G just, I just always just ran all my ideas through him and, and my homegirl Bambi. She got Inspire You on air radio. She started her own radio station. I was like, hey, man, like, y'all, I think this thing can be good, bro, and if y'all attached. You know what I'm saying? That's the icing on the cake. So, the very first one, he was a judge, she was a judge, our other partner was a judge.
How many people showed up the first time?
We probably had like one fifty. No heavy, no heavy promotion, and we had like seven genres, seven, eight genres. Uh, we got a guy named Levon, Levon Gray. He wrote One Mississippi for Kane Brown. He live in Nashville right now. He was in our first one. Guy named Sam Bet, uh, who his, one of his engineers and he record, that was an artist. He won it, white guy, uh. We had this rock band called Sloth Racer. This, this heavy rocks, rap artist, X-Havvy. Um, this boy and girl duet. We had this girl named Angel Hart did like dark folk, like, some, man, it. Um, this boy and girl duet, we had this girl named Angel Hart did like dark folk, like, something, man, it, I don't know. I don't even know why these folks, I don't even know where these folks came from, bro, I just made the post, it was like, I ain't never did no event before, you know what I'm saying? Song for song here go, we had like thirty artists submit, you know, those are the ones that made it to the top, and, you know, we had one win and.
Hit the run, hit the, uh, ground running. What do you, what do you see in the showcase of when he came to you with it? What was your thought about it, or your expectations from it?
More or less, uh, the setup from it, uh, it wasn't just a one day thing, uh, the actual, from the point of allowing entries to doing the selection process, to the different events that he had during the week for the artists that got selected, well, during the month that the artists got selected, leading up to the actual show. That's what really was stood out to me, that idea part, so, uh, that was the biggest thing. And then, you know, and that made the show even better, cause a lot of artists had more of an understanding of what would, what they needed to bring to the table with the show.
And you more invested when you over, over this period of time, leading up to this?
Right, 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 yeah, yeah, leading up. You know, it's song for song, ten, yeah, song, yeah.
In our very first show, we did it in thirty days. So, the, the idea was a little plotted, you see what I'm saying? The idea was baited to kind of promote a artist, but I just turned it into, to some, from a post that was made. But the idea was plotted because I, I wanted to do event, cause like I said, nobody weren't rocking with me, just cause I said I could manage artists and teach you about the, the business, their foes was like, bro, bro, rap people know me, I'm finna go viral or whatever, you know what I'm saying? I got money, bro, you ain't nobody, you know what I'm saying? Like, you don't know nothing, so. But the first show was thirty days, but, you know, after that, it then spun the Producer Awards, you know what I'm saying? He, he had his idea to do the Producer Award, so that's where the joint venture comes in, so, he does a thing for producers a- as well. So, like, he could tell y'all more about that aspect of it.
So, uh, Producer Awards, I guess you can say is a, uh, well, I started as a conglomerate, um, as a, just a group of producers that actually did events and kind of meetups.
And then y'all all got to beefing.
We still rocking, so, what it is, is, like I said, you know, uh, about, uh, like rap battles, DJ battles, shit like that, you know what I'm saying, cats come together, battle each other with lyrics or music. Well, in this case, you know what I'm saying, being a producer coming battle with beats. So, uh, I, I, I was in school for Atlanta for a while, for audio engineer, and I used to get interview battled myself, they had, used to have them all the time up there, you know what I'm saying, won a few of them, lost a lot of them. But, you know, I mean, met a lot of dope producers and got a chance to see where I was compared to a lot of other dope producers. You know what I'm saying, it was what it was, so, uh, came back down to Mobile, and they did have one, I got, uh, shouts out to Kalinsky as, uh, Alabama Hip-Hop Week, uh, back in the gap, this was seven, eight, nine years ago. They had, end up having the beat battle, and that was like the last time they had it, but, uh, then we, uh, popped up again. Uh, big shots at the self, Third Eye, down at New, uh, Soul Kitchen, rest in peace with him. They brought him back up for a second, and I ended up winning a couple of them, and then it died down again, cause I said he passed away. So, about what, uh, eight months ago, I think, cause we on produce, yeah, yeah, about eight months ago, we thought about it.
No way, you thought it was before that, remember? Cause you, you hit me probably about last year, and you were like, hey, bro. Yeah, you like, I'ma do something like, like that, bro. Cause he told, he was like, bro, I like that idea, I want you to work on something with me for producers. And then something happened, and we didn't get to it, but, and he, he was like, hey, bro, I got it, you know what I'm saying, you wanna host some? I was like, yeah, what it do? You know? About a year ago, for real, he said some initially.
When they do some shit in the house, it's a bunch of producers in this bar.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so I definitely wanna bring it to it, it's just a battle style thing, we started with, uh, I think we had fourteen producers sign up for the first one. Uh, I pulled some extra strings and got some judges down here that can really bring some weight. Uh, we set up at Dalton Street Sound Night Studio, we got in downtown Mobile, uh, so, it, it was nice. Yeah, yeah, no, uh, Matt Tastic and Al Gino that popped out for the first one, just to make it bigger than it was. So, we definitely had a lot of good links in the building. We battled it out, uh, from twelve producers down to the winner.
What do y'all, um, what do winners in these situations, what are they getting? What's happening?
So, with, uh, with the Producer Awards thing, we, uh, gave them, uh, like a combination of things. We did a, uh, branding package with, uh, Inspire You Radio for three months. Uh, did a cash prize of, uh, I think of whatever the producers that actually got into it. Half of that money went back to the winning producer, uh, we gave them like a production session at the studio, and a two hundred and fifty dollar gift card from Guitar Center. Yeah, and then just put them in that room with, uh, like I said, the judge, then the judges that we had, all the judges that I tried to get. The first one was crazy, uh, like I said, with Matt Tastic, who's Lil Baby's engineer. Yeah, he was there, Al Gino, who make all the No Cap and Rollo stuff. So, I mean, just to have that network experience, to be able to do stuff like that.
For sure.
Yeah, twenty-five bucks, kind of stretched a long way.
We ain't get, I ain't got no prizes, you don't get shit, or songs, I'll just play. But no, man, I mean, like you saying, we, you know, the, the rooms, you know, we, our judges and the people, we gonna give you access to, bro, like. First, that's the first thing, like, and, and that ain't even, like I said, it ain't a bragging thing, it's like, we've been putting in work and been blessed. We've been working and been blessed to have hands on with these people, that's all, that's all it's about, bro. And we try to get people to see, like, hey, bro, I can't make this person like you, but you have the opportunity to build a relationship in business with them, get your personals out of it, get the groupiness out of it. This is what you trying to do for your career, you don't gotta rap, do poetry, nothing. So, if you gonna do it, you gotta understand the kinks of it, so, hey, you in the room, is your music selling? I can only make the introduction, you got to put the work in with the person, if they studio timed that, I can't get you a discount, you talk to them. I ain't going to record, you know what I'm saying?
But it's why y'all found a way to, to become that median for, because, because of how y'all grew up and how y'all ended up with all these relationships that you have, you're able to do stuff for people that other people can't do, that just is what it is.
Other people don't do.
That's who, there's a lot of people that probably could do stuff, but they don't. So, you definitely doing stuff that people won't do, and, and it's fire that you found a way for, for a bunch of creators to feel like they have a chance, or feel like somebody goddamn looking out for them. You know what I'm saying? You gotta, they gotta know, they don't know, but they gotta know at some point, they gotta learn, goddamn, yeah, nah, he for to give you a discount, bro. That's not why I brought you here.
It ain't just that aspect, we, we just, like I said, we just really want people to understand, like, people's time is, is not, everybody's time is somebody else's time. You know, when you talking business, everybody's time is somebody else's time. If y'all a podcast, y'all on the people that y'all got booked at that time time, so if somebody need to be in and out, they gotta be on the time, because we on that other person's time. You get what I'm saying? So, we just trying to be, if I'ma facilitate and throw you this pass, bro, I took time to get you a good pass, just make the layup. You know what I'm saying? If you wide open, I gave you that pass, just make the layup, you know what I'm saying? Don't give up that because you ain't took time practicing your layups, you missing the layups.
And don't turn around mad at me, cause you missed?
Because, because it's there, like I said, I, I always give my people their flowers, cause that's who I learn from. So, as much song as Dre and Song for Song get, I throw the loop, like, bro, these folk, y'all gotta respect them first, so you respect me. Cause I respect them. So, if I send you to them for time, or whatever the case may be, respect that, me doing that, because I was.
Why would you, why would you do something that's gonna make me look wild?
And you represent you first, cause they gonna rock with me, they just gonna tell me not to send you no more. And then look, the second I ain't Dre, I ain't nobody going, you know what I'm saying? That's the second one, nah, ain't nobody going, you know what I'm saying?
Check this out, so, it's dinner time, oh shit. You, um, you can have, we, we having a special dinner, you can invite three people to this dinner. Anybody you want, they could be made up people, imaginary fictional characters, you can be, um, what we doing? Oh shit, I, we having a dinner, special dinner, you can invite three people, I guess we gonna do one apiece, and then y'all gotta agree on the other. Um, fictional people, it could be people that passed on, it be made up, it be real people, whoever you wanna be at this dinner table. We having dinner.
Three people that are coming to dinner?
Who y'all inviting to dinner?
Or three guests, I shouldn't say people.
And he can bring two of his nephews.
Yeah, you want Sandy, you want Asco with her, her and SpongeBob did?
They here.
They there.
They funny, dawg, hey. I wanna come back just to do a fun one, y'all funny for real.
Yeah, you gotta come back and do the regular show.
Okay, I'mma invite my four-year-old daughter. My, hey, I don't, man, golly, she just is an entertainer, dawg, and I just really want whoever else gonna be there to see her.
That's fine.
Her name Riley, man.
One of y'all seats just got to it.
I can't bring my son, cause boy, he gonna tear it up. Big guy gonna tear it up.
Who you inviting? Who you bringing to dinner?
That's only two.
I thought both of us do one.
Okay.
Somebody to dinner?
Oh, yeah, anybody. Anything. Predator, you wanna be Predator?
Could be Predator, I'm not bringing Predator. In the mic, in the mic.
Uh, just, I'd probably be my mom, probably.
Now y'all gotta agree on a guest.
Just be my mom.
Anybody now.
It can't be anybody now, cause it's just family there, you can't just bring anybody with mom, with moms and the daughter there.
Absolutely.
We gotta agree on a purse.
Yeah, now y'all gotta agree on the purse.
Predator definitely can't come.
He straight, like, he ain't gonna predator nobody while we in the building.
Who could we bring that's gonna help us make the most money? If we got.
Them dudes from Earn Your Leisure seem really serious about making money, like, they, every time I see, you know what I'm talking about? Every time I see them, y'all know what I'm talking about? Earn Your Leisure?
Oh, yeah, okay.
Them niggas, I'm like, they just be so serious.
They dead ass serious.
I don't know, I don't know who you, who you would bring though.
Who, who would you wanna bring? What direction would you go in there? We going to dinner, is the basis of the dinner just going to eat? Just family dinner? Tyler Perry?
No, I know, I can't think his name either.
But him, bro.
Which station, which station? Wouldn't that work?
I forgot his name, so I couldn't even invite him.
I, cause the only way I, I know you talking about is, cause I saw an interview where somebody was talking about him. So, I definitely, I ain't even see the dude, so I.
But, yeah, it'd be, it'd be him, I just don't know his name, but he'd be a great person to invite. Just definitely, yeah, yeah, cause if you.
Yeah, Tyler Perry, yeah.
If we saw Riley, we outta here.
Yeah, Tyler Perry is my daughter, we definitely outta here. What'd he say? Yeah, for sure.
He, he's, he told black women that, um, they should not be acting the way they be acting about dating somebody that make less money than them.
Let me tell you something, man.
If you dating a motherfucker because of how much money they make you on some bullshit.
I think that's the sense that he came to with it. We took it and saw it as, I'm saying, it was like what it was, so, if you tripping now, you know what I'm saying?
That was my first thought, was like, why don't you just not date that person?
Now, if he lied about his money making, that's different, you know what I'm saying?
Or if he making some of it illegally or something.
And it ain't consistent, it's up and down.
Yeah, I don't know.
Got anything to do with you liking me, bitch, don't like me, goddamn.
No, they definitely have something to do with it.
Don't like me at all, like me in the goddamn bucket, like me if I'm walking or if I'm in the Benz, goddamn. Yeah, if not, don't like me at all, goddamn, fuck that, it's, it's how it go, that's like, cause I'm shit, alright. I, I can show you I'm broke, even if I'm not broke, I can ride you, goddamn, this nigga broke.
What y'all eating at the dinner?
My wife cook, man.
So, it's at the house?
Definitely wagyu for me.
Hey, look, let me tell you something, what I learned about, what I learned about some beef, boy, cause I, I had to be right with him, boy. Cause let me tell you something. I will, just, just when I had my first piece of steak, my first filet. Meat could just be cooked in such a delicate way. When he just said that, that just, baby, I love you, but, ooh, you know, hey, wait, my wife know how I love some steak, you feel me? So, golly, he, yeah, golly. Cause the way that mug, every bite of that mug, the way it's gonna hit diff. That's a different hit, though.
I ain't paying them with some of them damn steak, though.
Yeah, you live when you live.
Look, but if, if I ain't never understood the sensation of just life.
I guess you're right.
To, to choose some food, like. You know how life is about, the, the, what they say, the guilty pleasures, like. You know, sometimes you eat, but sometimes you eat, man.
That's, most of the time, I just eat, I just don't really care, I just.
You ever had just a filet?
I had really fucking good food before, like, really good.
And, and it just make you feel a type of way, don't it?
I can understand that moment, but I don't care, and the other moments enough to, to work for that, yeah, again. If I could just take a little pill that would have me good to go every day? Until, until my dad cooked gumbo. I didn't think it would have no taste. I just said I don't care about the food, you trying to make it food.
This is a wicked ass meal.
What you got there?
Alright, um, I guess, speaking of food, meals and shit, it's one, um, end of the world tomorrow. Tomorrow morning, it's fucked up, but sometimes it happen. Sometimes it happen like that, sometimes in this time it happen, oh.
No, y'all write them questions, hot boy.
I would go say, what would be your last meal, but now I feel like I know. What's gonna be the last meal, for real, now that I think about it. So, I guess we don't even gotta worry about that question.
Hey, you took the cheese off, huh?
Um, y'all got a favorite cheese? Okay, then, this nigga looked to me weird, like cheese, nigga, who just eat cheese?
I got asthma, so I sometimes I gotta stay away from the cheese.
What? Explain to me this.
Well, it, it just. Well, it, it just be the congestion, yeah, that's out there, that's out there, certain stuff, certain stuff I just gotta watch my intake, so. I don't have a focus, I don't have a focus of, you know what I'm saying, like, I ain't no big eater like that, I'm, I'm the worst eater to ask, what we going to eat, m?
You eat like just Gouda, like you'll just eat some Gouda?
Like, no, 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 I wouldn't just eat Gouda, but I will, though, hey.
Well, just say, if you eating it in fall, you pick it up and eat it.
They be licking at me crazy, goddamn.
I learned to not judge people by no fetishes or nothing, people like, bro, everybody different, got their thing, so. This real food is out here, boy. People move to LA just to eat.
I don't know, I, I'm judging, I'm judging people, I cannot do it, I try in my mind, I tell myself like I'm not gonna be so judgmental, but then I judge someone, it's, it's happening. I judge people that listen to people eat, so I'm definitely gonna judge what you're eating.
Though, that's weird.
But some people love it, and it is, like, you like listening to rain, you like listening to chewing. Like, I can understand.
That's how them people going viral.
They just like listening to stuff getting crunched or something?
Them folk getting paid, boy.
Money, money. I understand, you, that's what you wanna hear, but I just.
Speaking of money, money. You could be the richest person in the world, or you could have two superpowers. Go get no money with the superpowers. You can't just go rob banks and shit like that, like, you could go join the circus if you wanted or whatever.
Give me the, ay. Give, give me the superpower.
So you gotta choose one, cause everybody gonna be like, yeah, nah, just give me the superpower and I'mma go take the money.
I'mma steal a money machine.
You can't go take the money, cause you got the su, you gotta choose one.
One of my superpowers gonna help me be able to get some money, I ain't gonna, no, 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 listen, you said I can't take the money. You didn't say I couldn't make the money. Cause all I need is, all I need is the knowledge.
Yeah, I just need to see the future. Wanna see the future, and, I mean, maybe, I don't know, goddamn, turn. What goddamn, but you say we can't use the steel money, though, just, I mean, could you have like the Midas touch type shit? Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I mean, that'd be superpower.
But you can't control it, fuck it, there you go, you, you turn everything to gold, but you can't control it, so everything you touch, ever turns to gold.
Superpower?
That's how it's supposed to go.
That's just, if it was the Midas touch.
I, I, I would have. Probably. The ability to poof, like night crawler, like any, anywhere I see, I could go there. That would be one, like anywhere I could see, yeah, anywhere I could visualize, I could go there in the instant, yeah.
Go to sleep for two hours.
I need to schedule my hotel there before I go. So I'm just gonna make sure.
Poof back to the crib.
Nah, don't worry about it, so every time I go, I'm just gonna, I'mma travel the world first, I'mma spend one year traveling the world. Everywhere I go, the first thing I'm doing, the reservero, to every country.
But you can't just poof.
Make sure I go look on that balcony too.
You can't just poof in the middle of a situation, guys.
You hanging off the power, now you wanna diminish the power, now you wanna.
What's your second superpower?
I probably had to have that press, uh, Professor Xavier brain, man.
You gonna have a, a cereb, cerebo?
Well, he just used that to control the.
To amplify his power?
The mutants, though, but it was for the mutants.
Ah, he could talk to humans too, huh?
No, I know he could, but naturally he could do that anyway, though. What cerebro was just created for that, you know, to connect to all the mutants, that's why he'd have so much power, cause that, I could instantly find all of them. Without having to scour the world myself, but his brain power was just, you know what I'm saying?
Little fucked up thing, though, like the more brain power you got, you can't walk now, goddamn.
Nah, that wasn't true with him.
It wasn't, I thought, shit, I don't, I ain't keep, I thought this what happened.
You just wanted to have it done, golly.
Like, he can control all this shit with his, with his brain to jump his legs. It's crazy. It's crazy, they could just like, where the bitches the work?
I, look, I. They gonna get mad at you, Kato, they got mad at me when I said it. The people out there on the internet be mad.
I mean, but that don't make sense, though.
I agree.
That don't make sense.
I agree.
He didn't have. Them kinda powers, I ain't never seen him, I seen him make people stop, I ain't never seen him make stuff move and do all that, though. He just.
No, he did, his wheelchair, he moves it.
Yes, yes, but he ain't, y'all know what I'm saying, he ain't never made nobody stop to turn around and walk, dude, I ain't never seen.
Use his powers, he could, though, he made, his wheelchair is powered by his brain.
He would've had to been thinking about walking all day, would be able to do that now. Hey, man, y'all, ay, I'm sorry, people that really is fast, it's their fault, you hear me? Y'all don't get on to me about superhero, I don't understand it, so why y'all gonna put me in a position to not understand that man controlling his body? If y'all, yeah, if y'all could tell me, put it in the comments, bro, cause I wanna learn, I wanna study it every day. I apologize, I know some y'all watching every day, so.
Storm, I'm finna walk.
I know how these folks feel about that hero, dawg, y'all play it, these folk for real, matter of fact, I'm out, I'm finna go. These folk don't play about that hero, bro, I might wanna go to Comic Con, not these folk on me. He was like, bro, we seen you on smoking permitted, we seen you on smoking permitted, bro.
You know DC is, you gotta be careful.
That's why I had the whole bite, so you could see. Cause it looked like a Newport before you get it. Do y'all, y'all have a favorite night from one of y'all events? And, and why was it your favorite so far? Some, something that happened, wha, whatever happened from one of those nights that you like this, that one, though?
I ain't gonna lie. I enjoy all of them, even here, like everyone did, like, even his, bro, every, every, every event we done did, been been epic. In, in my eye, for it being in our market and understanding the local scene. To bring together the powerhouses, the, the dynamics of people that we put in the rooms. And the fun that's just had when doing local, anything the right way like that, you know what I'm saying, the impact of, like I said. We getting people that don't come outside like that for local events and stuff, you know, not because they don't support it, but just. You know, cause they really like working and, and we, we able to buy their time out, and then you getting these. People to put and showcase their work, bro, and people just showing them love, bro, for one night. Whether they're a producer, whether they're an artist, the whole room is showing love, bro, like, we, we in them, in them producer wars. It's, it's like the warehouse, you feel me, we close and it's hot, you know what I'm saying, and, and people there through it all, bro, and ain't nobody complaining or nothing. And it's love the whole night for everybody, bro, like, respect and everything, it's crazy, bro.
You battling? The producers?
Uh, yeah, with the producers? No, 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 no.
Man, there you go, you know you gotta go up that ladder, man, don't wanna come bad, it's, y'all, man.
In the future, is it part of y'all? Y'all's conversation, cause y'all be, I know y'all to talk about it.
I forgot, my bad.
First battle, I did do, we, well, with, what I got going on is. I usually do like a, a special one versus one, where we kinda go live from the studio. Get two producers in there to do a one versus one, so for the first one, I actually battled somebody else for the one versus one. So, we, I did battle then, but for just the actual episode.
Yeah, nah, you did that to like kick it off, ay, this what we gonna do, let me show you the concept, I'm talking about now shit going. Gotta go up the ladder.
I read some shit I want you to explain to me. What is Waffle House jukebox style?
Say what now?
What, what, what was we reading, what was we reading, Bob, Bob was reading? Who was reading the bio?
He said that you had, that you said you have a Waffle House jukebox style.
I said, I gotta ask him what that means. What's a Waffle House jukebox style?
Oh, okay, I know what you're talking about, alright, so, okay.
Oh, I get what it mean, though, nah, I get it, though, I get no, but.
Like, it put a picture in your mind of exactly what it is. I ain't never heard no shit like that.
About six years ago, I think, uh, we were working at a Blue Magic Studio, and uh, WKRG came over and did a spotlight on. You know what I'm saying, being a producer or whatnot, and the writer wrote that up like that. Because of the fact, alright, so he, and he said it to me, and I kinda understood what he said, because after he explained it, I was like, alright, that sounds kinda cool. He told me to play some shit, so I played him a lot of shit, so, you know, I, I played him some of the country stuff, I got some of the rock stuff, I got R and B stuff. You know what I'm saying, he was switching styles so much, you know what I'm saying? That's what he wrote in the article, and I think when my assistant redid my bio. She told me to send her that article, and I think she found that caption and thought it was kinda catchy and funny.
Cause the article talk about all the different genres of music you work with, all the different stuff that you done.
Ay, I told y'all that boy, that boy named my phone, Mr. Miyake.
The picture in my head, it instantly, I knew exactly what, but I, yeah, I ain't never heard that before.
Some boys, some men in here, some, some Metallica in here.
What's the word I learned today? Let me put it in my notes.
Haberdashery.
I don't know how I heard that, but I've definitely heard haberdashery.
It is a soup shop.
Check this out.
It's possible.
You get one wish, one tangible thing, anything in the world, but it's gotta be something, like you can manifest, something that could, that's there for real. In order to get this, one random person. Somebody's gonna die.
They gone.
Somebody you cross paths with.
Somebody that you've encountered in your life at some point in time, in some way, shape or form.
If you don't.
You the only one here.
Everybody dies, except for you.
So you don't gotta kill nobody, but you gonna be lonely, what, what baby song?
Yeah, you, you get something, but it's gotta be something tangible, like it can't be magic and shit.
You have to choose something you're receiving in turn for this death, or you just have to be on the world by yourself.
Fucked up question.
I bet, I'm quit with it.
What you want? Anything, what, what were some examples?
We had one person that desired a field to frolic in.
Somebody wanted a field.
We had somebody that took over Equifax, was it Equifax? Yeah, Equifax, um, we had somebody that wanted a boat, but they didn't specify what type of boat, so instead of a yacht or a cruise ship, they were in a rowboat or something like that.
Be specific with what you want.
Yeah, you gotta, gotta actually want it now.
Can't get a superpower?
This is something real, has to be something real.
Oh, yeah, that's cool, that's cool, that's cool. I would definitely. Yeah, yeah, some random person, yeah, definitely gone.
Yeah, they gone.
Yeah, I would acquire Jeff Bezos assets.
Hostile takeover, I like it.
How you gonna get the boat past the brick, no, that's a different story.
Yeah, that'd be instantly sold to somebody else, and we'll just. But yeah, yeah, I would, yeah, random person, Jeff Bezos assets.
Just dropped. You mean he was looking in the window at the hospital with all them babies?
I was saving the baby for whatever he had. Yeah, you finna kill the baby, just so you know.
That's, that's, damn, y'all. Alright, but, so I got. Any rapists doing fifteen. Between five and fifteen years, they will have to go.
What, are you just killing people? You have to, you get something.
I know what y'all said, somebody had to die though.
So what do you get? What you getting with this baby that's all?
Everybody die, or, or I just be left here by myself?
If the baby don't die, everybody die, and you here by yourself.
Oh, the baby don't die, everybody die.
What you getting for this baby? She gone, her dog just sitting there licking her.
I don't want, I don't think I want that. Yeah, I'mma just kill myself.
Ah, this, you the end of Earth?
He said I could kill myself.
You could've just picked something.
Hey, Lord, we back.
He won the game.
Lord, hey, Lord, we back. Open the floodgates, that what he said, ain't it, I get the preacher to hear. We back to you, we all coming back.
Explain this extension?
Yeah, man, poof. If everybody go, and then I just go, man. I probably spend me a couple more hour, get me one off then.
Time to go.
I guess it's time to go.
Man, ay, song for song music, that's S O N G, the number four, S O N G music, that's on Instagram and Facebook. Uh, Dre Make Plays, D R E M A K E P L A Y S, man, Dre Make Plays, if y'all in Huntsville today. You know, whenever, you know, we in, up here for Sound on the Hill Week, so, just shout out to them, man.
Yeah, this ain't gonna, this gonna be a waffle.
Oh, yeah, definitely going down, man, oh, Studio House R E C, uh, Studio House Recordings. Studio House R E C, uh, Ron G Pro. When everything else, R O N G P R O, Studio House R E C spelled like it is, uh, I'll tap in, man.
Joining us.
Another special sessions.
Y'all know what it is, click on another one, like, share, subscribe, I'll let, go follow these guys, I mean, fuck with us next time, fuck with us every time, fuck with us last time.
I'm Bob Jaques.